Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yep.
Mr. Granitak?
President.
Ms. Jett Harris?
Here.
Mr. Peck?
Yeah.
I'm here. Alternates, Mr. Ginsburg?
Here.
Ms. Markovitz?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Maholland?
Yeah.
Ms. Spang? And I believe we have Ms. Tukanele as our ex officio tonight?
Here.
Okay. Gang's all here. First on the agenda, public delegations, which is the time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission on subject matters that are not on the agenda. Is anyone here tonight wanting to speak on something that is not on the agenda? No? Okay, we'll move right into our public hearing. I believe Mr. Peck is recusing himself and Mr. Schmidt, if you will continue sitting in his seat, please. This is a continuation of application ZDM Properties LLC for special permit and design review to develop properties identified in the applications 338, 344, and 348 Main Street, assessor map 11.2, lots 165 and 166 into a mixed-use project per sections 9.2.3 and 9.2.4, 25 and 24 of the zoning regulations. And before we start, a couple people mentioned they had a hard time hearing last time, so if everyone can speak up, and if you can't hear in the back, wave your hand or something, and we'll try to accommodate. The hearing was left open so the commission could further review what we've been looking at, and so first I'd like to ask the applicants if they have any more things to present or if they'd like to recap their presentation.
Yes, I would, thank you.
I'm out of the chair.
Couple of cleanup issues first. For the record, Norm Tebow, Killingley Engineering Associates, I'm a licensed professional engineer representing ZBM LLC this evening. First of all, there was a question on the application because it does state on the application that there was a restaurant-
Sir, we can't hear you.
Any better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. My apologies. First of all, the application that was submitted stated that there was a restaurant use and that was, we were requesting permitting for. Subsequently, per the recommendation of the town staff during our pre-presentation meeting, it was determined that the restaurant use would be removed as a proposed use. This use was not removed from the application that was previously submitted. I believe it was Mr. Donovan that asked that we provide a letter documenting that we will not be proposing a restaurant use at this time. So I've got this letter as a request to have this use stricken from the application. It is understood that if a restaurant use is proposed in the future, it would require additional permitting to demonstrate all applicable regulations are met. So I have this, I'd like to hand it for the record.
Give it to the chair, please.
Thank you.
And then Chairman Exhibit?
One.
Number or a letter?
A.
Letter A, thank you.
All right, secondly, there was also a question as to why a CAM application was not submitted with this project. Per section 14 of your regulations, specifically 14.2.2B, applications for a special permit submitted to the zoning commission in accordance with section 8.2 of the Connecticut general statutes and section 25 of these regulations qualify for a coastal site plan review exemption. As I said, that is section 14.2.2B of your regulations. Furthermore, section 8.2 of the Connecticut general statutes, specifically in chapter 124, which your regulations reference, section 8.2 is simply the format in which the zoning commission in each city, town, or borough is authorized to regulate uses within their jurisdiction, and they're authorized to provide and construct zoning regulations in order to meet these requirements. You, as the commission, have the authority to enforce these regulations as they are written. So that is a section of the Connecticut general statutes that your regulations refer to. So I just wanted to get that into the record as well. All right, moving ahead to the issue with Baptist Lane, I know there's been a lot of discussion as to the applicability of utilizing Baptist Lane. It's narrow, it could not accommodate the additional traffic. We, I've had discussions with Bill Shear, his email is up on your screen right now, and per Mr. Shear, he says, he addressed this to Mr. Maholland, and he copied me on it. It says, "Norm Tebow and I have had discussion about widening the entrance to Baptist Lane to improve access to the development. Please see the following bullet points below." The town acquired-
Any hard copies of that? I'm sorry, Nancy.
Pardon me?
Do you have any hard copies of that?
I do not.
What's the date on that?
It is dated the 18th. One, the town acquired a sidewalk easement from the owner of the, on the opposite side of Baptist Lane many years ago to accommodate widening Baptist Lane to 22 feet wide and adding a town sidewalk on private property. Number two, a 22-foot wide road width is appropriate for this type of short, non-through road. Number three, the entrance to Baptist Lane had to be limited to a 21-foot width because of a pre-existing utility pole. This utility pole has subsequently been replaced with a new pole to the west, which provides the opportunity to revisit the widening of the entrance to Baptist Lane. The old pole is still in place alongside the new one, and most of the utilities have already been switched over to the new pole. The applicant's engineer, which is myself, is prepared to propose widening to the entrance of Baptist Lane to 23 feet, from the approximately 21 feet, which would greatly improve the access to turn in and out of Baptist Lane. Number seven, the attached PDF describes the situation and possible remedy, which I will review as well. Conclusion, the East Line Engineering Department recommends that the zoning commission approves the proposed width increase to 23 feet at the beginning of Baptist Lane. The applicant will have to coordinate with Frontier to get the old pole removed to accommodate the widening. Number two, the engineering department's opinion is that the remaining 22-foot width of Baptist Lane is appropriate for this road and does not need to be increased. We recommend that the applicant dimensionally show the 22-foot width every 50 feet to ensure that the contractor constructs the project to that perimeter. Number three, the engineering department does not recommend a sidewalk on the west side of Baptist Lane. A single sidewalk at this location provides appropriate pedestrian travel without adding unnecessary infrastructure that Public Works would have to maintain. A second sidewalk would also increase the potential for vehicle and pedestrian conflict. When there is only one sidewalk, a driver must only concentrate on vehicles on one side and pedestrians on the other. A second sidewalk would introduce pedestrians on both sides as well as the existing vehicles. With the narrow right-of-way that exists in this situation, a second sidewalk is again not recommended. Number four, Connecticut state law prohibits parking within 25 feet of a road intersection. The engineering department recommends that the applicant consult with the East Line Board of Police Commissioners and the DOT to have a "no parking to corner" sign placed 25 feet from the intersection on Main Street. The proposed parking layout will need to be modified to accommodate this.
We don't have any hard copies of that, Bill?
I've got one, you can have that. I just have one copy, but I'm happy to share that.
Following up on Mr. Shear's recommendation, with regard to section 24.6C sidewalks, as a result of the recommendations from the town engineer, Bill Shear, we respectfully request a waiver of the requirement of a sidewalk along the eastern side of Baptist Lane. There are currently sidewalks along the property frontage on Main Street and along the western side of Baptist Lane, which lead to the municipal parking area known as the hole in the wall. There are not any sidewalks on the eastern side of Baptist Lane along the subject property or further south on Baptist Lane. We are proposed to widen the entrance of Baptist Lane at the intersection of Main Street and to construct sidewalk ramps and a crosswalk at the Main Street-Baptist Lane intersection to allow for pedestrian safety to cross at that point. I'd like to hand this in for the record as well.
I think East West is a flip-flop on that.
We'll have Exhibit B.
Can you provide us with this?
Yeah, I don't really-
We're entitled to any information between you.
It should be eastern side. I believe it should say eastern side of Baptist Lane.
Sorry?
Says there are currently, there are currently sidewalks along the property furniture on Main Street, along the western side of Baptist Lane. I believe there's currently sidewalks on the eastern side of Baptist Lane.
Can I apologize, so?
Thank you. Please continue.
What you see here, this is, these are photographs that Bill Shear provided showing the width of the roadway as you head down Baptist Lane. So he's got measurements of 22 feet, 22.2 feet. This photo here, you can see it's facing Main Street, and the poles in question are on the left-hand side of this particular photograph. In particular, the guide pole, which is right here, and this existing utility pole are no longer functional. The bulk of the wires have been transferred to the new pole that has been placed there. So this is a little closer. It shows that the, at the intersection, we go from 21.7, 21.5, 21.2 feet as the road comes in from Main Street. This is it with none of the dimensions on it. This is just a close-up of that sidewalk and the two poles. This is an overhead view of the existing poles. This pole right here to the left is one that most of the wiring has been transferred to. This is the guide pole that's coming down sort of diagonally to the lower right portion of the photograph, and this existing pole here is no longer functional. This is just viewing it from the other direction, the same couple of poles in the entrance to Baptist Lane, another close-up of those as well. I know a lot of these are kind of repetitive, but just to kind of give you guys an idea of what we have here. So what Mr. Shear is suggesting, since that pole on the right-hand side will be removed, we could widen that roadway by approximately two feet in that area, remove the existing pole on the right-hand side, and as a result of that, would be able to increase the throat of Baptist Lane to 23 feet from 21 feet. That would ultimately taper down to the 22 feet that we have along the remainder of Baptist Lane. Just different views that were put together for that. Moving on to the design drawings for that, we have shown on Sheet 3, we have a contractor shall coordinate with SNET and Frontier to facilitate removal of the old pole and the guide, which we show here on this particular view.
Is that an updated version? I'm sorry?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep. And then on this version here, we are showing a modification, number one. Let me enlarge this a little bit here to hopefully- All right, so what we've done is to, in order to accommodate no parking to the corner, we're showing the sign there, "Provide no parking here to corner," signed with a painted yellow curb. We're also going to provide some crosshatching in that area to prevent people from parking there. This shaded area that we show here is a new curb and a new ramp that will be installed, and we have the 22-foot width shown at 50-foot intervals up Baptist Lane, and we have the 23-foot width that's shown at the entrance. Also, as we proposed previously, we will provide a new painted crosswalk there. Now, even though the ramps are there, there is no crosswalk, so for pedestrian safety purposes, we will, we are proposing to provide a new painted crosswalk there as well. Further on, on Sheet, oh, I lost my screen. On Sheet 7 of the plans, we have added, we have added a signage to show the "No Parking From Here to Corner" sign that we're proposing to install, as well as the handicapped sidewalk ramp perpendicular. It's just a type 4 ramp that we will be constructing in that location. And finally, we're showing the signpost detail. These are typical metal signposts for breakaway signs that the DOT requires for any signage that is proposed within their right-of-way. I think at this point, that's all the additional information that I have to present this evening. Mr. Springsteen has a couple of things that he would like to review with the commission as well.
Good evening. Peter Springsteen, licensed architect in the state of Connecticut. Couple things I'd like to follow up on. The first one being, there was some mention of providing a storage amenity for the building, and this drawing here is the first floor whereby I have reconfigured some of these ancillary areas at the back of the building, so that we're still maintaining a sprinkler water room and a sizable electric room, and then we've created a storage room right in this rectangle right here. So that'll be suitable for bicycles and the like. Next item I'd like to talk about is the unit size. It's come to my attention that some of these units were not quite to the standard of regulation in terms of size. In your regulation, you have unit, minimum unit sizes in the mixed-use section of the regulations and in the multifamily section. If I go to the multifamily section, you have efficiencies at 480 square feet, one-bedrooms at 540, two-bedrooms at 700. And may I couple, culpa, I did go by that reg by mistake. Your mixed-use requirements are efficiencies of 500, one-bedrooms at 650, and two-bedrooms at 850 square feet. So there's a little bit of a difference there. So I went back, checked my calculations, and what I realized is that I had calculated the square footage of these units based on net square footage. In your regulations, there's net square footage and there's gross square footage. When I recalculated these, with gross square footage, most of them now fit into the regulation except for three of the one-bedrooms. So our solution to that problem is that we're going to reclassify those six one-bedrooms. There's three right here on the second floor and three here on the second floor. We're going to reclassify those as efficiencies, and they meet the mixed-use reg for efficiency units. So in summary, we're going to have, on the second floor, we're going to have two two-bedrooms, four bedrooms, four one-bedrooms, and three efficiencies, and we would have that same breakdown on the second floor. And that's all that I have tonight.
Thank you. Do the commission members have questions at this time?
I do. On the efficiencies, it does state in our regulations that an efficiency is defined as just a bathroom and a kitchen facility, not a living room. On your plans here, it shows, because I picked up on the sizes, that they are different. They're all different sizes. Efficiencies are 500 square feet, one-bedrooms are 650, and two-bedrooms are 800 square feet. So when you look at your original design, you were correct in amending it. However, an efficiency is a 500-square foot, and it defines an efficiency as just a kitchen area with a bathroom, and that's it. But on your diagrams, you have them all having living rooms and, you know, so it's-
Well, I think you might be misreading that a little bit in that you do have to have a living area to have a dwelling unit, otherwise it's not a dwelling unit. And we've taken the doors off what was formerly bedrooms-
Right.
So that it's all contiguous space.
So it's all open space, whereas before it was not?
Correct.
Okay, so, because in your diagram, it shows that it's closed off, so-
Right, and this new plan that I have up on the screen here, there's no more doors, it's cased openings to the sleeping area.
So there, since they're all different sizes on the second and third stories, all of the one-bedroom units and the two-bedroom units, like you have, our regulations say 800 square feet, but up on the second floor, you have some of them that are 798 or close, but they're still two square feet off. We're going from the inside, the inside wall to the inside wall.
That's the net square footage calculation that you're quoting.
And that's what we're supposed to have.
It doesn't, I don't see anywhere in your regulations where it says net versus gross for the calculation of the unit size. When we do, when we do building coverage, we have to count the exterior walls, so I'm going on that same premise.
Anybody else?
So in terms of square footage, what would the town use for, say, tax purposes for assessment, gross or net?
Gross. I'm not sure what the town uses for assessments.
What do you figure for parking?
So an efficiency unit has the same parking requirement than a one-bedroom does, so we're not changing-
I mean, I'm talking in terms of area.
I'm sorry, then?
Gross, net?
I don't understand the question.
So what's the relevance in commercial versus the residential? So the residential part is just, we're doing gross for parking? Am I understanding that correctly?
Your parking requirement is based, for the residential, your parking requirement is based on whether it's a one-bedroom?
No, I understand, I'm just talking about the square footage-wise, that's all.
I'm not sure.
Right, versus the residential part of it, for square footage-wise. I'm just clarifying-
So you want to know whether the retail square footage is net or gross?
More or less.
I think it's gross, but I'm not sure, okay. 3750.
Mr. Maholland?
If I may, in section- Let's try that. In section 22.1.10, retail store, medical, dental, personal service, one space for 250 square feet of gross for area.
I'm sorry, say that again, we were-
Sorry.
Could you tell me what page that is to books?
Well, in my book, it's 168, it's in section 22.
Thanks.
The pagination may be different in your books, depending on when they were picked
Mr. Springsteen, could you refresh our memory? The building you're proposing, is it basically the same height as the apartment building that's there, that you propose to tear down?
It's a little bit shorter than the existing building that's there.
So it's shorter than the existing one? And compared to, I don't know if you know this, compared to the building at the other end of town where the Siff Bakery, is your entire building smaller or larger than the Siff Building?
I think our square footage is less in this building than it is in the Norton Building.
So it's a smaller building?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one other really quick question about parking. So it says on your, the information we got dated April 6, April 6, 2023, it says, "The property has 34 spaces available." So it says, "The property," so how many of those are really on, that are going to be off-street parking, that are going to be in front? Because before, we had talked about it was going to be four. So now, is it, is it, what is it going to, what is it going to actually be?
Well, because now, it's actually been reduced to 30, to 33, as a result of taking that parking space away from the corner. So we're down to 33. There are seven parking spaces along the road, and the remainder of them are on the property itself.
And you're proposing to, sorry, Debbie, you're proposing to identify those parking spaces, is that correct? Painting them, or are you just allowing space for them?
We're proposing to paint them.
Nowhere else on Main Street, they're painted, but they will be in front of yours.
That's what I'm proposing. And I suppose that the DOT will ultimately have the final say in that, whether they want to see that. Yeah, correct.
That's right.
Yes, sir. If the DOT approves it, yes.
It's one thing you've got to remember, this is in a parking overlay zone, so the reason that the overlay zone was created was to assist businesses with downtown. In my interpretation, you know, it's nothing that should be abused. I'm not saying that it is, not by any means, but it's to, you know, when it was created, it was created to help the businesses that the town already has with future, okay? So now, if something like this painted lines, are you going to put, you know, names on them? Not names, but like parking for so-and-so only? Parking for this only, parking for that only?
No, there's no intention to do that.
Or are you just doing this in terms of coming up with your parking?
We're doing that to demonstrate, to demonstrate that we have adequate parking. Whether, I think, whether or not they end up striped or not, we do have, you know, based upon the minimum dimensions for a parallel parking space, I just wanted to demonstrate that we've got X number of spaces out in front of that, of that building.
And do you need any of the spaces out front?
We need three of them, yes.
Any other questions from the commission?
No, so you need three of them, as Mr. Donovan just asked, you need three of them in order to move forward with this, these seven parking spaces along the road.
That's correct.
So you need to take something from the street in order to be able to have this, enough parking for your facility, for the number of apartments you have.
Right, I mean, they're there now for the existing businesses and for the restaurant and the appraisers business that's there. Those parking spaces exist currently, we're just changing the use, but the spaces are still going to be there.
Right, but my question is, with the amount of apartments that are there, which is, it's still 21 bedrooms, correct?
Correct. We have enough, we have enough parking on the premises for the residential portion of it. of it.
Okay, so the only ones you need alongside the road would be, well, that's, okay, so that's with you stating that, how many would the efficiencies need? I mean, typically, two people are going to live in an efficiency, two people are going to live in a one-bedroom, and four people can live in a two-bedroom. So I'm just curious where the, where this calculation...
Well, it comes from your regulations. Your regulations clearly state what the parking requirements are, so we did our calculations based upon your regulations.
They're good by square footage.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Not occupants' square footage.
Right, right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes, please.
That section that they're referring to is 22.5 of your regulations, but it does state, excuse me, it's 22.7, and it does state parking spaces shall not be signed nor reserved on the ones on the street. So for the record, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't understand how you're going to mark something on state road.
Well, the plan, the plan is, has been reviewed by the DOT.
Yeah, because down the block, there's another restaurant where there's parking in the same, the same type of setup on the street.
Right.
It's open to the public.
Yeah, it was just a question, Mr. Dwyer.
Yeah, it, it will be open to the public, absolutely. We're not, we're not assigning those parking spaces to this particular facility. We're not assigning them to it, but...
I understand.
But your, your regulations do allow for on-street parking, and they, you know, and the calculation, as I said, the, the calculation that, that we did to demonstrate that we have adequate parking is based upon your regulations that we followed.
Square footage, yeah.
Any other questions from the commission, or are you ready to go on for public comment?
I just have a question, Mr. Mahalan. Could you provide us with the correspondence that you've had with other departments?
The, I don't have...
It says here in our regulations that we are entitled to see those. I would love to see them.
Where's that say?
In terms of design review?
In the design review?
Yeah, site plan, stuff like that.
And 34.
Storm review, so like the town engineers, you said one was away, is that correct? So Mr. Shear is...
Yeah, Bill Shear's taken over once in Kuwait on duty, in the, he's, National Guard. The design stuff is a separate type of application. You have the special permit. Staff has reviewed it, we discussed this at the last meeting, and they've, they've essentially signed off. Madam Chair, you tell me how you'd like to proceed on that question.
In the past, we've always relied on Mr. Mahalan telling us that the staff has signed off, so I don't know why this would be any different.
That actually is not always correct.
Well, most of the time, we have, it is.
I, I personally would like to see them signed off on, only, and for transparency, I think that I would like to see them. I'd like to also, too, I raised a question last time about a signed applicant. Do you have one of those that we could see? Okay, I'm sure you do, but I just, I just like to see it, but I, I would like to see, because, you know, I think these things are very important, and, you know, I would like to see any signed documents that we're allowed to have, I would like to see them. Thank you.
Okay, while he's looking for this, why don't we open it up to the public? If there are people that have not been here for the previous two hearings, let me just go over the, what we do here. You'll raise your hand, you'll come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We request that, if it's something that's already been said before, we already have that in the record, if you have something new to add, we'd love to hear from you. It's a time for comments, it's not a question and answer period per se. Because we have two hearings tonight, I'd request that you try to stick to the two- or three-minute minimum. If you see me waving this, I'm, I'm asking you to wind it up.
Mr. Mahalan, may I ask you that as well?
Yeah, sure.
So while you're looking at that, let's go ahead and start the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor of the project, sir?
Okay, good evening, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Bob Davis, and I live at 110 East Patagonia Road, right here in Niantic, okay? And I've lived in Niantic for over 30 years, I've moved here from Wickford. Before I go into too much detail, I just want to let everyone know here in the audience and on the panel, that I'm torn. When I first heard about this, I was opposed, okay? Because like everyone else here, the congestion in downtown, the, the parking, everything about it, I've watched it increase exponentially. It's increased exponentially in this town, it's increased exponentially in Mystic on I-95, and it seems as though there's not much really we can do about it. My background is in construction management and architecture, okay? I've worked for multinational companies for 50 years. I've seen the drawings, and the elevations, and the perspectives for, for this particular facility, and I think the way it's designed, it really lends itself to this community of Niantic. It's, it's just not a shell like the standard is and the Norton is, it's got some character to it, okay? That's one. I think that the people that live here will also have a lot to contribute to the community. You know, the expression, you don't use it, you lose it. Well, right now, we lost that cinema, okay, across the street. And, but we were fortunate enough that somebody stepped up to the plate and is going to take it over, and now what we have is this phenomenal Niantic Bay Playhouse. We had a restaurant that was in New London, and now we have one of the same name, Devs on Main Street, that moved to our Main Street. We have a nice pub, we have several nice restaurants, and I think the future is bright for the town. Now, I think that the individuals and the people that would be moving in to this facility, whatever it's called, is, will have a lot, like I said, have a lot to offer. They may look at the town, and they may think that they would like to open up a business, okay? Whether it be like a shop or another restaurant, all right? So in that respect, I think they have something to contribute. Then I also look at, what's the downside? I don't think that the traffic and the congestion, although, like I said earlier, I am torn, and I do empathize, you know, with everyone here that's concerned about that. However, what's the alternative? I think this is a very, very good-looking building, and I think it can contribute to downtown with not the crisis in traffic and parking that everybody thinks. I'm not going to say that it's minimum, because I can't predict that, but I do think that it'll be a real shot in the arm for the town. We can have like, what is it, 18 or 21 families that are going to go over to the Playhouse, that are going to go over to the restaurants, the library, the children's museum, and, and everything else. So I'm in favor for those reasons. I'm a little bit worried about what the alternative may be. I think this is an excellent design building, and like I said, in closing, I just said, it'll be a shot in the arm for the town. I understand that I'm sympathetic to the downsides, as minimum as I believe they are, and again, this is my personal opinion, but I, I'd like to see it proceed, okay? That's my two cents and small change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here tonight to speak in favor of the project? In the back?
Virginia Brennan, 364, 366 Main Street. I live right in between Lillian's and Cafe Soul. Lily, Cafe Soul, this building is built on my property line, believe me, I never speak in public, so bear with me. Originally, I was against this, and all my reasons for being for it now are very self-serving, I will admit. It gets that building off my property line, it gives me 16 feet before the building starts It's a nice-looking building. I notice everybody is complaining about the building where SIFT is, and I have to agree with you, it's terrible-looking. But nobody has brought up Bayside, which is directly across the street from me, and is a very attractive building, and this one looks very much like that one. Cafe Soul is an ugly building, and Buckley is an ugly building. I think it's a shame to lose the Victorian in the middle, but, and I guess last but not least is going to do nothing but increase my property value.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak in favor of the project? One's, one's, okay, oh, another hand.
Hi, Melinda Gross, East Shore Drive, Niantic. I have to say the same, I'm, I'm in favor of it. My only concern is the parking, but I do, I agree, I think, you know, Niantic, it's a nice-looking building, and I think to, I'm always pro-business, and I think it's going to be great to bring in new businesses down here, so I'm for it. I mean, I think it's nice, it's, the way that it looks, I don't know what it is about SIFT and all of that, but I think the way that this is designed is just an attractive building. I think we need this in Niantic, and we need to have, you know, our, our concern is, is the parking, like I said, and the street, because I've seen it, I know how the parking is at my parking, at my lot. I get so many people in my store that are parking that were from Cafe Soul, that will park in my parking places, so I'm a little concerned about that, because I'm already losing a lot of people as it is, you know, a lot of parking spaces. So I am concerned about that, but I do think that it's an attractive building, I'm for it, so, thank you.
Do you have one to put on the screen? Do you want to talk about the exterior?
We have questions about the materials.
Yes, the exterior of the building is a shingle product, whether it be a wood shingle or a composite shingle. The second and third floor are shingle products, and then the, in those gables that you see, that's a board and batten type effect, we have double-hung windows, we have this first-floor porch element, and at the, at the commercial level, we have a shiplap siding rather than the shingle siding to distinguish between commercial and residential. Lots of white trim, and we're going to use a architectural-grade asphalt shingle for the roofing.
And the color, sir?
The color, we're going to, on the shingle, we're going to do a natural shingle color, so in the composites, you can get that color, so it's fixed there permanently.
Peter, do you have the other presentation with the colors on it, or simulator?
I don't know if I have that here.
Do you want to pass this around? I'm fine with it. It's not in color, but it, the detail's pretty good.
I have one in color, if somebody wants to see it.
Oh, yeah, pass that one over.
All right, yeah.
Worst case, we have that.
So while he's doing that, I just would like to ask the question again. The products that you talked about, you said that they were like, they were nice products. And I asked you a question before, I just want to kind of ask it again to make sure that it's still on the record, the way that I asked it, is that there, we're not going to hear an excuse later if this application doesn't move forward. You can get these materials that you're showing on the picture and on the diagrams that you, that COVID isn't going to stop that, or there's no backlash, you know, back order of the materials that you are saying that you can get for this project.
I don't think there'll be any problem getting the products that we've represented that we're going to use here.
Okay, while he's looking for a color picture for the slide, is there anyone else here that wants to speak for the project? If not, we'll move on, if anyone who hasn't spoken and has something new to say, or if there's a new person, just speak against the project. And I saw your hand just go up.
Against. Hi, my name's Abby Hancock, 10 South Street. I apologize if I'm repeating things, I haven't been to a meeting yet, so apologies. I am a lifelong resident, and I have noticed that the town has changed a lot over the years, and I fear that the heart of downtown Niantic is disappearing. The new yellow building, as we all have discussed, sticks out like a sore thumb, and those condos above it are priced as if they were located in New York City. This makes me very sad to see that our beautiful little town on the shore has become out of reach. Now to hear a similar project is proposed just yards away adds to my feelings. These apartments, as we all know, would be knocking down a local restaurant that has been there for more than a decade, becoming a staple in town. Whenever I have friends or family visiting, you know we're going to Cafe Soul, that's our first stop. To see them potentially relocate so a new building of overpriced apartments and boutiques can open in its place breaks my heart. I may not be an expert, I have an education degree, I am not an architect, but there has to be other places in town where this could fit better. Why are we adding more to a location on Main Street that does not have the space? This location makes me wonder the following: rent prices, and will they disguise these prices behind the following phrases? Step onto Main Street USA, overlooking Long Island Sound, small-town charm. This very building that is being proposed is taking away all of those things. Please do not let the idea of more residents in town take away from our town. Where my anger, frustration, and sadness really stem from is the bigger picture. The town wants to knock down a building that is run by a local small business of a family of women. What does this say about our town? Women in business are faced with issues like this every single day, and I never thought the town of East Line would make that list. We don't have to talk about it, but the looming sign of women-friendly facility on Main Street just adds to this. I hear laughs. If you've ever set foot in Cafe Soul, you know that you're about to have the best lunch or cup of coffee you've ever had, and the warmest smile that you've ever gotten. I have been fortunate enough to know the family that owns that restaurant for many years, and I am sad to think that they could be leaving that location. Is it the goal of Niantic not to support women in business and small local restaurants? Or have we become too obsessed with beating out other towns for the best small town in Connecticut that we've lost sight of things completely? Yes, a business can relocate, but what does that say about our priorities? Again, picture the headline, Town Kicks Out A Family Of Women Business Owners To Make Room For Overpriced Apartments. I see the Day article now. If the town thinks this is the future, then consider this noted for future elections. I do not write these words to be cruel or mean, I write them out of concern and love for this town. I've been here almost 30, been here my whole life. This place has been home for me, and I want others to view it that way as well, but let's look at the bigger picture and not forget the principle. I want to ensure that the heart of our town never goes away. That heart is located in small local businesses, especially those run by women.
Oh, by the window?
Hi, again. I'm actually not going to go with the against, I'm going to go somewhere in the middle. I just wanted to like, say a little piece. Unfortunately, the properties have been purchased. Jessica Denneken.
In the address, please.
Yes, ma'am, 366 Main Street.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, the properties themselves have been purchased. They were never owned by Tabby, who runs Cafe Soul. I mean, I'm going to be so sad to lose them as a neighbor, don't get me wrong, but that, they were never owned by her. And that's the way that businesses and properties work, is that they get sold, and they get, you know, purchased, and people can put in what they see fit. And I can't really find any faults with their design according to our zoning regulations. I think they've gone out of their way to make it look a little more Niantic-y than some other buildings are, and it's sad, but sadness isn't business, and sadness isn't increasing the number of people who live in town, and so, like this gentleman here, I empathize with everybody a lot, like, we're tight, me and Tabby, but it's, it's business, and it's progress, if you believe that, as I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else to, oh, by the back door?
Good evening, Mary Day, 94 Pennsylvania Ave., Niantic, Unit 2. So, what's happening right now in Niantic reminds me of a song called "Big Yellow Taxi" by Joni Mitchell. And the lyrics go, "They paved paradise, put up a parking lot, with a pink hotel, a boutique, and a swinging hotspot. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone? They paved paradise and put up a parking lot." Cafe Soul is a little slice of paradise to many of us who are fortunate enough to call Niantic home, as well as our seasonal tourists. I've lived here my whole life and the proposed development on Main Street does not fit the quaint village of Niantic. Big boxes and cookie cutter developments are not charming. They look sterile, they tell no story. Older buildings, historic buildings, places that are a little bit funky and different from the rest, places that have character, that's charming. I urge you to think very carefully about a decision, and it's probably too late, but a decision that will forever impact the seaside charm of Niantic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Russell Freidner, 118 Bayview Avenue. I have a few questions. I really see a problem with the parking, which everybody's addressed. To say that we need three spaces on the street is just telling, I don't know, it just, it sounds funky to me that we need these three spaces, so we meet your requirements. I look across the street, I also collect things from business people in the area for raffles that I do. The businesses across the street have all gone out of business. It's the same building, it's just across the street. I don't see like, oh, we're going to bring business here. You're going to bring business, there's no place to park, there's no place to shop. It's going to impact the people who are driving down the street, because I was here last weekend when it was nice and sunny. You have to rely on the kindness of people to let you out of that street. And I don't see it's going to get any better. So, I don't understand this, I mean, I'm not really opposed to post, but I just think, another thing I was thinking is, they could actually move the building a little bit and put in their own driveway on the other side, to their parking lot, without impacting, what is it, Bath, I can't remember.
Baptist.
Baptist. They could do that, they have the room, they could move it. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else tonight, okay, right here?
Thank you, I'm Mary Jean Hull and I live at 46 Quarry Dock Road, off of Waschewagachi Hills Road. I moved here in 2004 as a retiree and I too have seen this town change from when I came. I'm not sure that I could afford to buy a house here now to retire. I came from Weathersfield and then Bloomfield down here. What I soon see is a police study, the traffic study, that says, we're, we need a traffic light at Baptist for the people to get out of the beach and the people to get out of their apartment. The next thing I see, and I may not be here to have to live through this, but when you go to buy your beach sticker, they'll say, "What day of the week would you like?" We have so many people here that we cannot give you a beach sticker for any day of the week. I think we need to take that into consideration. How many people can this town crush into it and still have our beaches available to all of us who pay taxes here? How many traffic lights can you have on a state-numbered highway? Maybe Mr. Dwyer knows. You don't, okay. So, I don't know if we could have a traffic light there, but I think the suggestion to go in, that this gentleman just made, to go in at a different place and to reduce the number of squished little apartments, I'm not impressed with the size of those apartments. I would hate to have to retire into 400 or 500 square feet myself. And I also find that it's a very dark building, so that it will be imposing on Main Street. I'm glad it's shingle, I'd like to see it a little lighter and a little smaller. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? A lady right here in the second row, yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Gail Santa Maria and I live at 26 Hague Avenue. My specific complaint is that, well, I have a few actually. The building is too big. It's imposing, as my friend said, and it's in the worst possible place on Main Street because the intersection at Baptist Lane gets backed up already in the boardwalk and hole-in-the-wall parking lot, there are about 66 parking spaces. Then you add 34 in this building, you've got 100 people going in and out of there all the time. As it is, I don't know if another foot will make a big difference, but if you are trying to turn in, turn left into Baptist Lane and there's a car already there, you can't do it, there isn't enough space. So, you get, you get traffic backed up in both directions. Last week, when it was, it was summer, on Thursday and Friday, the traffic on Main Street was backed up to, almost to Smith's Acres, in both directions. And I think that intersection right there is probably part of the problem. So, I think the location is the worst place possible. It's too big. Why can't it be smaller? Only two, two levels. Why does it have to be three levels? It makes it so imposing. I've been coming here my whole life, only lived here for three years, but the Norton was, is an eyesore, in my opinion, and this one, while its design is a little bit nicer, I think it's in the wrong place and it's too big and it will add exponentially to the traffic in Niantic. I don't want Niantic to be like Mystic, where you can't consider going there on a Saturday because you'll be sitting in traffic on Main Street. There's already plenty of traffic here in the summer and I think this will only add to the traffic problems for the people who live here. I'm not, I'm not as concerned about the tourists. There's no big parking, parking lot for tourists, or they could park elsewhere and then come on Main Street like there is in Mystic, so I would be in the against side.
Thank you for your comments. There's a lady in the back row?
Madeline Miller, 28 Bush Hill Drive. I have a point, a question, because nobody's talked about it. When is construction planning to start? Is it going to start in the summer? Is it going to add to that traffic? I'm just asking.
I think that was asked a couple of weeks ago and I think it depends when they, if it passes, when they find someone to build it and I don't think there is a solid date yet.
I, yeah, I'd like to make sure that that's a condition, that the construction is not going during the summer at Hole-in-the-Wall. I'm an accountant. We heard the police department recommend 25 feet from the corner and that loses one spot. That doesn't add up in my...
Can you guys silence your cellphones, please?
That doesn't add up in my math, 25 feet, one parking spot. Second question, is it 25 feet on both sides of the street? If it's, if we change it, do we have to change it on both sides? Secondly, last week, we found out there was an unsigned application. Did anyone go and get a legal opinion that you guys are okay to continue and previously to review all of that? I'd like to see that legal opinion as part of this case, as part of the package, so that everybody here can see it. Because I don't think you're supposed to continue with an unsigned, incomplete package. You're not supposed to respond and you, sorry, you're, I would like for you once to respond in, in favor of any one of these townspeople here, because I have sat here and listened to every time you respond, it is in favor of the developer. And I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to the people.
Excuse me, I haven't responded in favor of anyone. I've said thank you to anybody who's here and I don't think you need to go down that route.
My perception, sorry, my perception. The other thing, Mr. Mahalan said, there was a, the spot was eligible for an exemption on one of the packages that you had. I wanted to know if that exemption was granted. And the, the coastal impact study, I'm still not clear as to why that wasn't done when it was done for the building across the street, so I'd like to see the package to see why that wasn't done. And again, is there an exemption and was it granted? The striping, or even proposing of the striping of the parking spots is in violation, you read it tonight, it's in violation of the town regulations. It's not allowed. This developer's package has had more non-conforming, non-conforming is the wrong word, more errors and more overlays and there's been design errors, mistakes, the unsigned. Does anybody know what they're actually reviewing at this point? Because if, if I brought this to my boss, I'd be in trouble. I want to say thank you to the board members who've kept an open mind and represented the people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm speaking to you this evening, exercising my rights as a resident of this town. I am not representing the Board of Selectmen this evening. Ms. Chikillo is representing the Board of Selectmen.
Could we have you address, leave an address?
6 Overbrook Road, East Line.
Thank you.
This is before you as a special permit, correct? That means that exceptions have to be made in order for this to be carried forward. In 1966, I graduated from college with my husband. We didn't have jobs. There were three job openings in the entire state of Maine for a social studies teacher. I interviewed for one and they, they informed me that I was the best qualified candidate, but they needed a football coach. Today, I would have said, "Show me the locker room." And then, just when we had about given up and I thought I was going to have to go back to waitressing, I got a telephone call from the superintendent in East Line and he said, "We've got jobs for, for both of you. We'll find a job for your husband, but we want you." So, I came for the tour. Of course, we had to borrow a car from a fraternity brother because we didn't have a car that would make it down here. And the superintendent, after the interview, said that he'd like to show me around town in his Mercedes convertible. And of course, the part of town that he drove me through was Old Black Point. And I said to my husband, "What are we doing? We'll never be able to afford to live in this town. I've never even seen a Mercedes, never mind ridden in a Mercedes convertible before." The superintendent said, "Don't worry. The secretaries will help you and we'll find you a rental place to live in Niantic." And so, we found a little house down at Crescent Beach, which we rented for a couple of years and so began my 58th love affair with East Line, my 58-year love affair. My husband didn't mind. So, I think that this is a major departure for the downtown. I'm very concerned about it. If we have, if we allow this by special permit, let's just look up and down the street. What's next? What's next to go? And you think about what our town used to be. People used to wait in line, not for Cafe Soul, it wasn't here yet, but wait in line for an hour to get into Constantine's Restaurant for a shore dinner. And the other things that many of us who have lived here for a long time remember and unfortunately newcomers have missed out on. I think that this is a lovely building. Wrong spot. It towers over downtown. It is not a tourist attraction. We depend on our tourist business. Who's going to come to town to say, "Gee, I'd like to look up and see those new rental units, those condos." So, as the project began, and I give the developers a lot of credit, they've worked hard on this, but let's look at what happened to a similar development across the street. We were promised there would be condos, that there would be adequate parking and that there would be shops in the lower level. And yes, there were when they first opened and then one by one, the little shops closed because they couldn't afford the rents. And so, as you drive there, do you stop and look to see what's there now? Well, there's a real estate office, there's a few other businesses, but nobody comes to Niantic to go to those businesses. They're businesses that are there from local. So, I think Niantic is special. It's very special. I, as you know, I'm a Maine girl. I frequently travel to Maine and usually stop at a rest area on the way. So, recently, I was there for some business and as would happen, you walk up and down a little bit, swing your arms, exercise, get rid of the fanny fatigue. And lo and behold, these, these two people started talking to me and they said, "We noticed your license plates. You live in Connecticut?" I wanted to say, "Well, why do you think I got the license plates?" But, "Yes, I live in Connecticut." "Well, where do you live?" I said, "Well, we live down near the shore, down on, down on the shoreline." And they said, "Well, we have friends that have been tried to get, trying to get us to go down there for a couple of years to visit. They go there two or three times a year to visit. Where do you live?" I said, "I live in East Line." "Oh, is that anywhere near Niantic?" There you go. So, I think we have to look at what we're giving up here. The White House, maybe it needs some repairs, but it's a reminder of what our town used to be like. It's historical. People love the Yellow Candy Shop. That's going to be there. That'll remain. Cafe Soul, yes, that could move to another location, but should existing businesses have to make way for a project that was a special permit? So, I won't continue with my life history because I can't do it in three minutes, but I just think that this is a crossroads. I personally have been very upset about it. I was thinking about it at four o'clock in the morning today, about what I would say. I am not a negative person, I like to see things happen in Niantic. I don't think this is the right happening. I'll never get to vote on this, yes or no, because this will never come before the Board of Selectmen. This won't come before the Board of Finance. This won't come before anybody else except the six of you. There's a lot on your shoulders. We haven't seen a turnout for public hearings like this since we worried about what we were going to do about the coyotes. Now, we can worry about this. So, I think the fact that a lot of people have turned out to express their opinions... So I think the fact that a lot of people have turned out to express their opinions, and yes, there have been some poor, some pro opinions, but I think it's a big sacrifice for what Niantic means to so many people, and not only people that live in this town. We're a destination. We don't want to be mystic. Never mind the traffic. We don't want to be mystic. We want to be Niantic, and we're known for that. So I know that you'll consider this very carefully. As I said, I know you have a lot on your shoulders, but you six people are the ones that are going to determine the future of downtown Niantic. Good luck.
Thank you so much. There's a gentleman with his hands up.
Hi, my name is Daniel Glynn, G-L-Y-N-N. I reside at 103 Flanders Road.
Would you speak up, please, a moment?
Yes. I reside at 103 Flanders Road, and I am a licensed architect in the state of Connecticut. I've lived in Niantic virtually all of my life. I grew up on Society Road, and we built a house on Flanders Road in 1989. What I'm hearing here is a lot of opposition to the project, and I've heard the comments on East Line Community Forum, and they pretty much replicate what I've heard tonight. At the same time, I don't want to just speak in opposition to the project. I'd like to offer a possible solution, where the developer could get what they want, a return on their investment for the property, and also do deference to the architectural fabric of Niantic. So what I'd like to propose very quickly, I put this together last night, I don't know if you could see it, but what I'd like to suggest, instead of building another big box in town, which I think is the last thing Niantic needs at this point, I took the GIS map off the town website. So we've got Main Street along the top, Baptist Lane here, Hole-in-the-Wall Beach down here. This is Cafe Soul. This is the 1894 Victorian House. This is the commercial building on the corner. What I'm proposing as a compromise to the owner is that the existing three buildings be maintained, so that you, the streetscape-
Excuse me. We're the ones you gotta-
Oh, okay.
I tried to get your attention.
Okay, I'll speak to you, I'm sorry. So the three buildings from this, from the view from Main Street could remain exactly as is. Cafe Soul would remain, Victorian House, front part would remain, the commercial building front part would remain. A portion of these two buildings would be removed, and what I'm suggesting is that all new construction be confined to the area behind the existing buildings, so that we preserve the architectural character of Main Street. And what I've done here is, we're in a CB zone, there's 40% lot coverage allowed, so I've sized the new addition with the existing buildings to be right at the limit of 40% lot coverage. So basically, I'm just suggesting that rather than build this big box on the corner of Baptist Lane and Main Street, that we actually move everything back, have the new building act as a backdrop to the existing buildings, and you can still go to Cafe Soul, have your lunch, you still have the Victorian House, and the developer also gets the revenue and the return on his investment.
Thank you for your comments. And so, anyone else that has something to say that has not been said before? We still have another hearing tonight. Anybody? Okay. Oh, one person.
A question. Is it possible to have a referendum on this?
That wouldn't be up to zoning.
Who do we ask for that?
I'll let someone else answer that. But we're not really having a question and answer session now. Does anyone on the commission have any last questions or comments? Does the architect or engineer have any last comments? I would ask for a motion, if anyone so desires the closest hearing.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I would like to ask, as I did before, any communications that Mr. Mahalan has had with other departments, such as Mr. Geislin Planning.
I couldn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
I just want the other communications, any communications between inter-office memos, such as planning, et cetera. Which is actually, you know, tonight, we received an email from Mr. Shear, which was read into the record from the applicant, but again, it's an email. I mean, normally, we receive letters like this from the Town of East Line, in between, you know, offices and stuff, and I'm just-
I don't know if that's been the practice.
It's not been common practice. From time to time, you'd receive copies of some correspondence. Mr. Geislin is our planner and wetland-
Mr. Mahalan, did you say last meeting that you would provide those, with those, if we asked, correct?
I said, I had them, pleasure of the chair.
How many on the committee thinks they'd like to see those memos? Anybody but Mr. Bonniver.
I have to take staff at their word?
Mr. Mahalan's always been by the book. I don't see, me too, we've always taken word from our staff.
I agree with Madam Chair.
I think we'll continue as usual. This isn't really a question-answer. I think I'm looking for a motion to close the hearing. Mr. Dwyer just made a motion to close the hearing. Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So we have one opposed, five ayes. Hearing is closed. Let's take a three-minute break before we start the next hearing, please. Okay. Could I have your attention, please? We're getting ready to start the second hearing. If someone in the back could shut the door, since there are people out there making noise. If Mr. Peck could come back. We are moving on to the proposed East Line Zoning Commission text amendment to Section 9, CB Commercial Districts, and Section 25.5 CB Zone under Mixed Use of the East Line Zoning Regulations. Mr. Mahalan, was the legal note run?
Yes.
Thank you. And now, I believe our secretary has some memos to read.
I do. First one is from William Mahalan, zoning official, dated January 31st, 2023. Proposed zoning regulations, text amendment, CB zone, building bulk, mixed use. The zoning commission's Subcommittee on Building Bulk Mixed Use met on a number of occasions to review this issue. Discussion was diverse, and various options were presented, such as leaving the regulations as they are, making drastic changes, and making minor modifications. The committee, after some debate, agreed to offer the following text amendment for consideration and possible action. Specifically, it is proposed to, one, delete from Section 9, CB Commercial Districts, Section 9.2.3, Mixed Use Developments, and from Section 25.5, CB Zone Under Mixed Use. It is further proposed to add Section 9.2.3, which would state, 9.2.3 Mixed Use Existing Buildings. Add to Section 25.5, CB Zone, Mixed Use, one, second-floor residential units over existing first-floor commercial uses and existing buildings. Two, square footage to be no greater than the existing first-floor area. Number three, second-floor residential units may be added as a new second floor addition to existing one-story buildings. Number four, parking in accordance with Section 22. Number five, height as per Section 9. Six, subject to Section 34 Architectural Design Review. Seven, municipal sewer and water must be provided. Item two, Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, East Line Zoning Commission, care of William Mahalan, zoning official. Subject, Connecticut DEP, LWRD, comments on proposed zoning amendments to delete slash replace new section CB Zone 9.2.3, Mixed Use for Existing Building. Dear Commissioners, thank you for notifying the Land and Water Resource Division of the proposed text amendment noted above, received on January 19th, 2022. Acting as the Commissioner's staff, our office has reviewed the revised text for consistency with the policies and standards of Connecticut Coastal Management Act, Connecticut General Statutes, Sections 22A-90 through 22A-112 inclusive, and finds them generally consistent. These comments are made in response to the review requirement contained in Connecticut General Statute, Section 22A-104, subsection E, which requires that any zoning regulations or changes thereto affecting the area within the coastal boundary shall be consistent with the policies of Connecticut General Statutes, Section 22A-92, and the criteria of subsection B of Section 22A-102 of the CCMA. Further, this section requires that notification be sent to the Commissioner of the Energy and Environmental Protection at least 35 days prior to the commencement of the public hearing. Once notified, our office is responsible for reviewing the proposals' consistency with the policies of Section 22A-92 and the criteria of Section 22A-102B of the CCMA. This response does not necessarily reflect other planning and zoning considerations which may apply. Should you have any questions regarding this letter or any other coastal management matters, please refer to contact me via email. Sincerely, Marcy L. Ballen. I did that again?
You did.
Item number three, Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, addressed to myself, Terry Granitak. Dear Miss Granitak, again, I am writing a responsive application for regulation amendments for the Town of East Line. The application was received on March 6th, 2023. The application was referred to this agency pursuant to Section 8-3 of the Connecticut General Statutes. The proposed amendment recommends deletion of Section 9.2.3, Mixed Use Developments, from Section 9, CB Commercial Districts, and replace it with 9.2.3, Mixed Use Existing Buildings. It also recommends deletion of Section 25.5, Mixed Use Developments, and replace it with Mixed Use Existing Buildings and Associated Requirements. Based on a review of the material provided, I determined that the proposed amendments are not likely to have negative intermunicipal impact. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Nicole Haggerty, Platter 2. And finally, from Town East Line Planning Commission, dear Chairwoman Thurlow, the East Line Planning Commission is, at its meeting of April 11th, 2023, found the above referenced text amendment inconsistent with the 2020 East Line Plan of Conservation and Development, Chapter 8.2, Recommendation Number 1, which states, "Limit future commercial development to existing commercially zoned areas. Support efficient use of commercial space by updating zoning regulations to allow multi-unit housing developments only as part of a mixed-use building, i.e. first-floor commercial, top floors residential, to ensure that commercially zoned areas remain available for commercial uses." And Chapter 8.2, Recommendation Number 10, which states, "Continue to support actions that strengthen Niantic's downtown CB Commercial District, where much progress in this area has been achieved since the 2009 POCD." In addition, the Planning Commission was concerned about the long-term consequences of the proposed changes and how they would affect the economic health and vibrancy that has been experienced in downtown since 2008. As such, the Planning Commission felt that the proposed changes warranted more time to study the impact of the proposal. Further, the Planning Commission indicated that we, they would be open to a joint Subcommittee with the Zoning Commission to draft a regulation that is consistent with the POCD and that will satisfy the Zoning Commission's concerns. If you have any further questions regarding this letter or POCD, please do not hesitate to contact the Director of Planning, Gary A. Geislin. Sincerely, Cook Scott Secretary, Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peck, would you like to add anything to the reading of the proposal? I know this is-
I'd like to make a statement. And I wanted to be clear that this proposal was originally, there was a Subcommittee formed by three of us on this commission. We came up with the basic plan. Bill actually wrote, edited the text amendment. This commission then voted to bring it to public hearing. Was not unanimous, but it was close. This, if it passes tonight, will have no effect on the previous application, public hearing that just transpired. Since I was on that Subcommittee, I am going to express my, I'm a proponent of this text amendment, and I'm going to explain what exactly, where this Subcommittee was coming from. About 30 years ago, when Niantic Village was struggling, it was felt that more people living in the village would support the local businesses, and therefore, help to enhance the village. When this board received an application for Crescent Point Assisted Living, we changed the regulations to accommodate it. Then we were presented with an application for Bayside, across the street from Lilian's. We changed the regs to the current mixed-use regulations to accommodate that project. We also, a while back, changed the regs to allow for a large multifamily development in the village. The result? We were village on Main Street. These changes did help to stimulate downtown Niantic. The affordable housing projects on Hope Street followed, as did the Norton, and two apartment houses on the waterfront, overlooking the tracks. And of course, the most recent application for the mixed-use project on the corner of Baptist and Main. We have since eliminated large multifamily and assisted-living developments from the list of permitted uses in the CB zone. This board felt that we had enough of the large multifamily developments in the village, so we turned off the valve, so to speak. We found it a bit heartbreaking, but understood that these developments needed to be large in order to maximize their profitability. Hence, the two to three existing buildings would likely needed to be demolished to accommodate this type of use. We now find ourselves at another crossroad. Niantic is flourishing. Summer traffic is heavy, but we are losing a good bit of our heritage by encouraging the demolition of our small first-generation historical buildings in the village. We have very good architectural design regulations, but imagine all the old, small buildings being eliminated, and Main Street lined with nothing but large new structures. There is simply no way you can replace an old historical building. You can gain further appreciation of what I'm talking about by attending an Historical Society slide presentation of these old buildings back in the day, with comment on who, what, and when presented. Believe me, it's quite interesting and heartwarming. It's heritage. Towns that preserve and protect their heritage are usually great places in which to live. Chapter 4 of our Plan of Conservation and Development promotes the preservation of historic properties. And by the way, that plan was drafted three years ago- And by the way, that plan was drafted three years ago. Our own architectural design review regulations for the village suggests the protection of historic structures. The many comments at our public hearings on April 6th, 13th, and tonight certainly display a strong sentiment that more behemoths are not wanted and that the charm that has helped to make the village popular is at risk. This text amendment will help to discourage the demolition of our older buildings by disallowing mixed use, large mixed use, except by conversion of an existing structure or an addition of a second level to an existing one-story building. I encourage you to approve this amendment to promote the general quality of life in Niantic. It is time to turn off the valve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peck. Does anyone on the commission have questions for Mr. Peck about what he just said?
I do, actually. I have a question. What, what this do with houses that are residential, that are in commercially zoned areas? Um, say for instance, somebody wanted to add something to their house, um, or extend the footprint of their house under the current regulations, I believe they can do it? Am I right about that or wrong?
I believe you can do, with this new regulation, you will be able to take that house and convert it. Uh, if it's a Cape Cod, you can add a second story on, a full second story, putting retail on the first floor and an apartment or two on the second floor.
What if the house remained residential? Would they still be able to add to it if it was just a residential house, you know, remaining just residential strictly?
Yeah.
Say what?
If I may, it's, uh, in CB...
This, this, this proposal does not have anything to do with one-family or two-family houses. This has to do with mixed use.
Right, but the answer to the question, single-family homes are permitted in the CB zone. Permitted outright, as are two-family...
So it's not going to affect residential houses then? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, we'll go to public and see if there are any comments. Do I have any comments for this text amendment? Yes, sir.
Just a question.
Could you speak up or...
Sure.
Yeah. And we need your name and address, please.
I can remember.
Before, before I start, I'll add a little levity here tonight.
Thank you.
Roseanne, well, excluding everyone up here, that it seems like many a politician this day tends to misrepresent or misspeak, I guess, as opposed to the L-word. Roseanne's story about Maine is absolutely true because I know the couple that lent her a car to come down to Connecticut. Carol Hersen, right? So that, uh, does, anything you're, you're, you're talking about tonight have to do with Niantic Village?
We're talking about the CB zone, which is Niantic Village, yes.
That's beyond the traitors property, is that what we're talking about?
It has no, it's only the CB zone, which is Main Street, part of Pennsylvania Avenue, uh, Grand Street, pretty much downtown, downtown Niantic.
So it has nothing to do with, uh, the proposed village?
No.
Okay. My name is Jim Snow for the record. I live at 164 Pennsylvania Avenue. I've lived here longer than anybody sitting here. Came to, uh, Niantic, oh, I think so, 1952, so figure it out. So when you paid your bill, you paid your, your phone bill above Wilson's apartment store, you took your electric bill across the street to the C O M P building. Life was a lot easier there. Thank you.
Did you get the spelling?
S-N-O-W.
Got it. Is there anyone else that would like to talk in favor of this text amendment? If not, is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? No? Calling once, oh, okay.
Uh, my name is, uh, Dan Cunningham. I live at 161 Main Street and, uh, in the interest of full disclosure, I am a, I serve on the Board of Selectmen, but I am speaking only as a citizen tonight in that, in that Some concerns, uh, I had a difficult time until just a, an hour ago to get a copy of the amendment. Now, maybe it was available somewhere. I could not find it on the, uh, on the website so that, um, I could interpret it and try to decide, you know, what I thought the impact would be and make some useful comments. I, I would like to, uh, see the amendment in the context of the other sections that it affects. I mean, all we have here is, um, the changes, but I think in order to make an informed or an, form an opinion on it, you really need to see what was eliminated and how it affects, how it works with those other, uh, regulations. Uh, the other concern I have is that, you know, we saw, um, a presentation over the last couple of weeks for this new building, and, uh, there are, uh, people in favor, people against, and of course, it's this board that has to, uh, make that decision. And, and this, uh, text amendment seems to be, uh, sort of opposed to that type of development. I mean, clearly it is. And I worry that if it is enacted, that, um, it could be construed as a taking, uh, under the takings clause and, uh, you know, could, um, form litigation and there could be lawsuits against the town, uh, for people that own properties on Main Street and that end town that do want to, uh, make some changes. So I would just ask that the, the board be cautious. I think that any decision should be delayed until, um, uh, the full amendment with the other, uh, regulations be published together and made available, uh, to citizens so they can really review it and make, uh, comments. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else tonight? Okay, can I have, do I hear a motion to close this hearing?
I just have a question for Bill. I thought your, what you put together was complete and addressed any sections that this may affect, correct?
Yes, as far as I am concerned, the commission's familiar with, with the, the regulations that are in the...
Can't hear you, Bill.
The, the commission's familiar, this is a commission-proposed regulation, so the commission is, is, uh, familiar with the regulations that it's going to delete. And you'll have to obviously take a book and look in there to understand what sections are proposed to be deleted, and these are the ads. Um, the commission's familiar with that. I think, um, if you're not familiar with zoning, make sure you haven't looked in the book to see what was going to be deleted, that you may not clearly understand the regulation. You all are experienced with your own regulations, so you have more knowledge than the average person would.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to make one last comment during the public hearing in regards to the last speaker. We have, as I mentioned in my statement, we have been right regulations, we have been taking them away as we feel is prudent, and we've never gotten any, any kind of trouble as far as being a taking of rights. We're a zoning board. One of our charges is to maintain the quality of life, maintain the property values, um, and our regulations say, uh, we keep the harmony in the neighborhood. So I don't think we have a legal problem with a, any kind of taking of, of the rights of people.
Mr. Peck, if I may add too, it's not like we are eliminating the whole mixed use.
Correct.
What we are doing is we are trying to basically put a leash on it, as you may say, in my interpretation, to where you could have an existing building, and as long as you keep that footprint, you can turn it into a mixed use. Like Mr. Jeff Harris was talking about residential before, I mean, if somebody wants to buy a, a piece of property that's in the CB zone and has, you know, a residential house on it, as long as they keep that footprint, they could put a mixed-use special permit application for said property. So it's not like to where we are eliminating this from the whole zoning regs. We're just trying to keep the village-esque look, as you may say, in the CB zone. My interpretation.
I'd just like to throw one comment out. Since apparently, um, the text amendment was not in the materials online for the public to pull, it sounds like...
It was.
Was it?
Yes. It was under April 20th, uh...
Okay, so it was?
Yes.
All right. I had my own copy, so I didn't look. I just wanted to make sure we had that on the, that people could have seen that. So we basically need a motion to close this hearing or continue it if anyone has a reason to continue?
I would like to, uh, continue it only because I was on the subcommittee and I never saw this document, and I would like to have time to review it before I make any decision or have an opinion either way. I have not seen this document until just now.
Which one, Ben?
Yeah, I was on the subcommittee. I'm sorry, Mrs....
Yeah, which document?
Um, it's the one for, that's addressed to Ann Thurlow, the, um, CGS 8 dash 3A zoning referral application of the Eastline Zoning Commission proposed text amendment to amend section 9 CB. This one that was in here?
From Planning.
Yes, it was the one that, uh, Gary Geisell, uh, for, uh, wanted us to look further and somebody said something about. I've, I've never seen this before, so I, I would like to review it, um, until maybe next week so I could make sure that I am making an informed decision, is my personal opinion.
All right, so are you making a motion then?
I'm making a motion, yes.
To continue it until...
Next week, yeah.
Next, so I don't think we're meeting...
Okay, then the week after, because I know we're not meeting next week, but if we can meet the, the week after, I'd greatly appreciate that time so I could go over this.
We have a motion on the floor. Does anyone like to second that? Mr. Dwyer seconded. Any, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four ayes.
I abstain.
Okay. And Mr. Donovan?
Aye.
Four ayes, one aye and one abstention. It will be continued until the next zoning meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Um, we have the application of Anna Lathrop for Gourmet Gallery for a special permit for outdoor dining at 185 Main Street, Niantic. Um, Mr. Mahalan has the legal ad run.
Yes.
Thank you. I believe we have a memo.
Yes, there should be, uh, hang on. The memo's somewhere, you don't have it yet.
Okay.
Let me shift gears.
Okay, if you care to read that.
Sure, I have a memo dated, uh, April 20th, 2023 to the Eastline Zoning Commission from, uh, Mr. William Mahalan. Special permit application for Gourmet Gallery Outdoor Dining, 185 Main Street, Niantic. Anna Lathrop, the owner of Gourmet Gallery, has applied for a special permit to serve alcoholic beverages on the patio at her business noted above. The application is submitted under section 20.25 of the zoning regulations. As the commission is aware, this section provides standards for such permits. In this case, the existing patio is surrounded by a wrought iron fence which encloses the area immediate, uh, in front, immediately in front of the restaurant. There are four tables which seat 16 people. Ms. Lathrop would like to provide alcoholic beverages as an ancillary use to the food service under the provisions. Uh, the applicant's agent is present and can answer any questions.
Yes, I believe, um, Ms. Lathrop couldn't be here. Could you tell us your name and address?
Certainly. Uh, James Roth, uh, 19 Elliott Avenue, New London. Um, I am the general manager for Gourmet Gallery, um, in Niantic as well as in, uh, North Stonington. Uh, today happens to be the 25th anniversary for Gourmet Gallery, so I was tasked with, yes, this is, this is a good second consolation gift for the party. Also, um, I, I just want to thank everybody for, for, um, having me here and, um, being part of this. This is my first, uh, meeting and it's been a really wonderful experience, so thank Do you have any questions for me?
Time to close.
Yeah, so, so it's, yeah, so, so we open, um, our hours of operation are consistent seven days a week, and it's from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And by 6:30, we are cleaning up and, yeah, yeah.
Could you repeat your last name, call?
Roth, R-O-T-H.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you, is there any music outside or no?
No, there isn't. We have music playing inside, um, but this isn't rock and roll and, and, you know, we're, this is something that you would kind of, um, it's more ambiance, ambiance, background music, anything from, um, like smooth jazz to classical, yeah.
That'd be inside, you said.
Inside.
Inside, yeah.
Nothing outside?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
Are you proposing, are you have, uh, put up umbrellas, you understand there's no advertising on them, right?
Correct.
But I can't hear you, I couldn't hear what you said.
I'm sorry, there are already umbrellas up, but there are no advertising on them, which is part of your regulation. I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to close?
Snowman?
Anyone second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstain? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The hearing's closed. Next, we did have an application of Todd Donovan for the clubhouse for a special permit for commercial indoor recreation, indoor baseball, softball training at 15 Industrial Park Road, assessors map 26.112. Um, he requested that we keep the hearing open. He could not be here. He needs to sort out some legal issues and lease issues before he makes his presentation. So do I have a motion to continue that?
I make a motion that we continue, um, his request until he can...
We have a second with Mr. Dwyer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstain? 6-0-0, it passed. Next, we'll be going into a regular meeting. Does the commission feel like they need a three-minute break before we start?
No. I don't know.
Okay. Um, the, the first thing to come up would be approval of minutes of April 13th, 2023. If you want to take a minute to look through those.
Madam Chair, what I noticed on here is that, uh, Ms. Spang identified Mr. Tibbo as a T Tibbo, not an N Turbo.
Okay, make that note.
Copy and paste again, I believe.
Thank you.
And then down, three-quarters way down there, I don't know what sentence is, which version of the DOT traffic numbers were used? The last one was used, done in February 2021, then T, period, nothing. So I think that just needs to be eliminated because the next sentence, uh, add my name, last name Donovan to it, said the applicant used a 2018 version.
Martin wasn't here though?
That's right.
I can show it to you. It's right about here. The T dot on the end there. Yeah. Right now, it just says T dot. That's what the applicant...
I just have one change, just that my name is spelled wrong off the radar, so...
Could you spell your name, please? Thank you.
I know, everybody does, it's okay. C-I-C-C-A- Thanks. Thanks.
And that correction for Norm is all the way through, just.
It's already not in the title.
Correct.
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve them with the change, amended changes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Passed? Six zero zero. Next up is the continuation of application ZDM Properties LLC for special permit and design review to develop properties identified in the applications 338, 344, and 348 Main Street, Assessor Map 11.2 lots 165 and 166 into a mixed-use project per sections 9.2.3 and 9.2.4, 25 and 24 of the zoning regulations. Here we go. Yes, Mr. Perk is recusing himself and Mr. Schmidt will be seated. Also, I want to ask Mr. Dwyer if he had a chance to review the minutes from last meeting? Okay, thank you.
You just voted on it.
Does any, anybody want to start? I'd like to hear from everyone. No one has an opinion, I can't believe it. No one ha- I have an opinion, I'll start. I know it's very difficult, everyone is very passionate about what they feel. I know a lot of people have come here and I emphasize with people that are passionate and come and speak before a board. I brought the coyote crowd and was disappointed when it didn't go my way, but I know there are people that do not want it. I also have run into several people in town that are certainly excited about it. I am for it and I would vote for it. I would not want to see a string of these along both sides of the street. I think we do need smaller buildings, however, I think that there is room for one more. I think we're tearing down not one of our iconic buildings. I mean, I personally would have a hard time tearing down something like the main, the cinema, the Main Street Grill, the Norton House. But I'm sorry, we're talking about a rundown apartment building, we're talking about two smaller buildings with no architectural value. I do live in the Village and I've lived there 15 years, I love the Village. Also, I might be boring, but I do love the SIFT building. I know a lot of my neighbors, friends and coworkers love it. I appreciate it so much and the businesses it brought. It saves people from spending their money and they'll save a gold mine and Mystic. Normally people that would drive 20, 30 miles to buy something can walk to that building, buy what they have to offer. It's thriving, the businesses down there are absolutely thriving. There are lines to get in them and I know people do want to shop, shop here and I think it would be great to have another this, building of that caliber to attract those kind of high-end businesses. I think we don't have that many. It saves time and gas to go to other towns, it brings revenue into our town. The new building is shorter than the apartment building there, it's smaller than the building where SIFT is. I think it's a more New England design than the appraisal building or the cafe sole building. I just think if it meets the codes and it meets the regulations that it should be approved, but that's just my opinion and I'd love to hear from the other commission members.
Thank you for breaking the ice and ripping the band-aid off, as I said. I'll just start out by saying that I, I am in favor of the project, but I do have a great many apprehensions and I share many of the sentiments of the public. And again, we have to be cautious because there, there could be a silent majority that supports it that, you know, don't have the same level of emotion to bring them down here and speak here. So we also have to, to, you know, speak for those people. There's a huge influx of, of young people in town. You have probably generational opinions on this project. There's people that have sentimental attachments to a building they used to live in, you know, what they, what they always picture Niantic Main Street to look like. I, I get it. Progress is difficult, it's uncomfortable. My concerns from the zoning, not so much regulation point of view, but the future of Main Street, I agree with the chair in that this, this shouldn't, these buildings shouldn't be lining Main Street. I think that there's going to have to be a hard look going forward at mixed use and some of the parking exceptions that are allowed in mixed use. I do agree that this, this project is very, very tight on parking even though it does meet zoning regulations. I think a lot of the, there's a lot of traffic issues, not necessarily related to this building, but we have traffic issues in Niantic. We have, we have, we have speeding downtown, we have a ton of pedestrian traffic, we don't have good crosswalks, we have all, a whole host of traffic and safety-related issues. And will this building emphasize some of those issues? Probably. But again, I think there's issues that need to be addressed down the road that, so we don't, we don't box ourselves into a, that Mystic corner situation that Mystic has and this shouldn't be Mystic and a lot of people compare it to Mystic. Baptist Lane, I think the engineer and the architect and the town did a decent job of addressing Main Street, I mean Baptist Street, you know, there is a, the main and, main and Baptist, you know, that needs to be addressed. We're not going to, we already have a problem there, we're not going to make the problem bigger, this is an opportunity to address that problem. But again, it, it fits zoning regulations. There, do there need to be some changes down the road? Possibly. But as it stands right now, it fits. I don't have a logical reason that I think I could bring to Superior Court if it's appealed and it is what it is. I think there's some positives and negatives and, but in overall, I favor the project.
Paul speaks next. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Dwyer.
Whether we like it or not, this project meets all our laws. We made up certain laws, the applicant came along, fulfilled every requirement that we we stated we needed. I find it hard to disagree with them and turn it down. I can only see it go in the court after, after the applicant, as I said, he agreed with everything that we, we wanted him to do. So I have to say, I, I would go along with it.
My concern is, is that when you read the zoning regulations, the purpose it states, these regulations are adopted for the purposes set forth in the general statutes of the state of Connecticut, namely to promote health, promote the health, safety and general welfare of the town of East Slime by preventing the overcrowding of land and avoiding undue concentration of population, preventing or lessening congestion of the public highways, encouraging energy efficient, energy efficient development, which we did not touch on, but they did a very good presentation in my opinion. I think that they really tried really hard. I do agree that the regulations are going to mandate us to, well, I, I feel like my personal opinion is, is they do meet that, but there's a couple of things in there that are kind of, you know, concerning to me, like, are, you know, we, we're going to have to really be on our toes that if we do move forward with this, that whatever they say they're going to put up, they're going to put up. Like if they say they're going to put up the textured stuff that they said they were going to do, we need to be very, to really make sure that they do it so we don't have any kind of issues at all, that it's going to look like what it says. But I do have, my one concerning is at this point for myself personally, I leave my personal opinion out the door, but I just think that it's really going to cause an undue concentration of population and it's going to affect the traffic in that area that's already, you know, bad in the summertime. And it also too, there's one other thing I'd like to add. Part of the zoning regulations that are adopted that are, that's in the book, the zoning regulations book that I have that I refer to all the time, one of the things in there too that states what we're supposed to do is stabilizing and conserving the value of land, homes and other buildings. And I, I kind of struggle with, am I, you know, is it, is it, is it conserving the value of the land or the current homes that exist there now? I do like that the building does look nice. I do like the mixed use. I do, I, I understand all of that and bringing town to East Slime is important. I believe that responsible economic growth is important and we are bound by these zoning regulations legally and that is the hardship that we face when we vote, in my opinion.
Mr. Schmidt?
I agree with a lot of what's been said already, that it does comply with, or the presenters have made a good case for trying to make this meet all of the architectural standards that we laid out and it's in conformance with the POCD that was passed in 2020. Yes, traffic is always a concern in downtown Niantic. This might add to it a little bit, but you know, I'm down at Baptist Lane every single day almost, I walk the boardwalk and park on the hole-in-the-wall beach parking lot there. It will add to it, but it does, in my opinion, I haven't seen any reason that I can vote against it. People have talked at great length about it being a behemoth and comparing it to the Norton Building, but I believe if my numbers are right, it's only slightly more than half the size of the Norton Building. So it is significantly smaller. It meets the height requirement, the architectural requirement, they've tried to make the windows match the older New England style. I think they have made a good faith effort to make it fit in as well as they can and still get some ROI for themselves. In that case, I'm in favor of it.
As you know, at the last public hearing, Mr. Dwyer, you were not here, the applicant submitted some information on a traffic study from the year 2000. That is what I'm having trouble with right now. So you've heard many of us talk about the traffic now, you know? I would have liked to see an updated traffic study from both the state, which is done every three years, I understand that, better than a couple graphs that were given from the year 2000. And to touch on Debbie's point, in our regulations in section 24 here, it says we're site plan review requirements. A couple snippets from here, so where a site plan is required, the site plan shall be prepared in accordance with the purpose and intent of these regulations, which is to provide for safe and efficient vehicular and pedestrian, excuse me, pedestrian circulation and carries on, protect public health, safety and general welfare. So myself, I do think it's a nice looking building, just like the rest of you, you know? Mr. Springsteen is familiar with this town, he has been there. There are, you know, like Terry said here, there's, there's pros and there's cons, you know? I'm a sidewalk guy, you know that, now they've taken that back out, but yet they've offered to open up the road. But in terms of the public, you know, the outcry, I mean, I've been on this commission for several years now, you know, others have been here as alternates and such, but to me, the way that this was presented to us in terms of the application, to me, it just, it doesn't fit right with me. And you guys, you're all open to your own opinions, but to me, it just seems like it was, is thrown together and it just, I would like to see a better traffic study. We require them on, on everything else that generally are, you know, produced from an outside firm other than the applicant's representation. So, but, I, I mean, it's, it is what it is. I'm not, I'm not, you know, against it totally, but, you know, scale back, you know, I'm also, you know, it says in here that they have to have floor plans. They don't have a first floor plan, they just have a big open area, you know, a gross floor area, so I just.
He did address the reason why. Do you, they wait to see who's renting and then divide it as they.
Forget it.
But no, no, I didn't know if you wanted that.
I'm done.
Okay.
I mean, I, you know, I understa- I have a hard, the, the traffic study, again, this is, I'm not too familiar with the traffic studies and obviously they're every three years. I'm wondering just for discussion's sake, 2020's was a COVID year, was there, do we think there was more or less traffic than there is now? Did COVID, did COVID keep people home and traveling in town?
To answer that question is yes, in 2021. But the traffic study that I'm talking about is, the applicant referred to ITE.
Yep.
Okay? So the information that was given to us from the applicant, the maps. So the, the demographic of those maps were from the year 2000. That's 22 years ago from when this was filed, okay? Things change, like we said, development changes, which is good, don't get me wrong, you know? But we all know the population of this town has grown, plus it doubles in the summertime. And, you know, personally, this is the first time that I have actually seen an inadequate traffic study.
Is there any way that we could, I have, I have traffic concerns as well, only because the zoning regulations address it. Is there any way that we can get that, a, a current traffic study? Only, only because, the reason why I say that is because we've never had a turnout of public hearing, this, this many people, and I really just think that if, if it's really going to vote and if it goes through, I, I think for me, it's important that the residents know that we have done everything that we are supposed to do. I don't, and, and then if it goes through, we can, you know, say, hey, we've done everything that we, we were legally and supposed to do, but we can't get a traffic study? I, I just want, I mean, even if, even if we do vote it, it's okay, but it's some, I mean, we still have questions that are really big questions when it comes to our traffic areas. Is there any way that we can get a traffic study done, like in a timely manner or, you know, whatever, because I meant, I, I mean, it's, it's, traffic is a huge issue.
I mean, I think the problem is, is that, you know, we could have a new traffic study, but again, I went down there, we all, most, all live in town. We're, it's the, the traffic is one thing on a July day and it's something else on December 5th, you know? How, how, how is this project going to impact traffic and, and how is traffic going to impact this project? And again, we could study it in December, we could study it in July, we're going to have two completely different things. We would have to study Baptist Lane, we would have to study the beach use, we'd have to study all sorts of things. And again, what?
So be it.
So be it, but how much is that, how much is that going to affect the outcome and how we vote? I can tell you that the traffic is horrible. It's horrible, but in terms of an up or down vote for this project, I don't, I don't see 26 residents having an impact when you have thousands and thousands of cars traveling up and down Main Street every day to get from Old Lime to Waterford. We're talking about, for the most part, through traffic. That's what the traffic study is going to, is going to pinpoint, is people coming from Old Lime to Waterford, to go to the new restaurant in Waterford. So again, we could have another traffic study, but I'm not really sure what the impact that is going to have on my decision, maybe others, but I, I don't know.
I agree with you.
I do too, there's, I mean, you don't know, it's very unlikely everybody in an apartment leaves at the same time, comes home at the same time, so you have a few people scattered throughout the day. I personally don't think it would change the traffic study, that much.
I agree with Mr. Granitex that the, the main problem is the traffic on Main Street coming through town and it has gotten worse and it will continue to get worse for the next four and a half years while they're redoing the I-95, 161 thing there and then they're going to entertain upgrading Route 161 immediately after that. People are getting off at the Rocky Neck Connector and coming down 156 in order to circumvent one, you know, I-95. And this project won't have any impact on that traffic.
Other than improving the traffic flow at the intersection, which people pointed out as a problem.
I have another question too. Now that they've made a couple units into efficiencies, as a lot of people may or may not be aware of, that when you have certain square footage, you could, there are only a certain amount of people are allowed to live there. So now that they have efficiencies, how many people are legally allowed to live in that square footage? Mr. Mahalan, do you have that answer?
We don't regulate how many people can live.
Well, what's gonna happen is, is that possibly if, if, if in an efficiency apartment or one-bedroom apartment, you could have six people living in it, that, that's not allowed.
Unfortunately, Debbie, that's, that's beyond us, though.
It is?
Yeah.
I think that question was.
Sorry, I just figured I'd ask, because we've, I've experienced that before.
Property management and controlling, controlling that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
It is, you know, you, you tried it as a commission here, you know, you try to take the, the applicant's word and stuff like that, and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, but.
I don't think, think the applicant has much control over it, once it's done.
No, you know what I mean, though, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You could rent the apartment and move in five relatives.
True, some, some.
That's very difficult to stop.
But, again, to me, I mean, it, maybe I'm the only one here, but, again, you know, this, to me, was not an improper applica, excuse me, was an improper application. We've had others, you know, applicants with better studies versus the applicant himself being Norm there on, on behalf of Mr. Preck. I just find that quite troubling, to be honest with you. And you can all take it as you may, but it sounds like you already made up your mind, so, so be it.
Do we have a motion tonight?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application ZDM Properties LLC for a special permit, design review, redeveloped properties identified in application as 338, 344, and 348 Main Street, assesses map 11.2 lots 16155 and 166, and a mixed use. Projects per sections 9.2.3 and 9.2.4, 25 and 24 of the zoning regulations.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a.
We need two motions, one for design and one for.
Yes, can we do that motion separately?
It's up to you, Madam Chair, I just wanted to remind you.
Yes, we have them both. Do we have, um, we have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Any extensions? It passed for two. Do we have?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application ZDM Properties LLC for certain certificate of design appropriations that redeveloped properties identified in the application of 338, 344, and 348 Main Street, assesses map 11.2 lots 155 and 166, and a mixed use building.
Excuse me, Matt, what is this other motion for?
The design review.
Certificate of, of design.
Do we have a second?
What?
Is that for the architectural review?
Yes.
Architectural review?
So technically, then we could ask for our own opinion on that, is that correct?
He.
Is there discussion?
He made a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Is there discussion?
Set as, Mr. Mahalan.
Pardon?
I said, we can actually ask for a review of that, correct?
They did review it in the presentation. They went through the whole design criteria and told.
Are you familiar with the bylaw, section 34, 11.2.1?
Yes.
What does it say?
Well, I can't repeat them verbatim, but it talks about no flat roofs, doing New England style wherever you can, and talks about covered porches in his.
Actually, it says.
Way of escaping.
It covers all the things.
The commission may seek the recommendation of any town agency or regional council or outside specialist with which it consults. Any report or recommendations from said agencies shall be entered. If the commission grants or denies an application, it shall state upon the record reasons for its decisions. So.
Yes.
We could ask for a separate review.
From who?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, I think that.
I said, said we could ask that.
We may, but I'm satisfied with, he went through and went through every point of that section and how they adhered to our guidelines.
And how the existing buildings are non-compliant.
Right down to the landscaping.
Any building that is non-compliant in town of East Lime will be denied from Mr. Mahalan anyway.
That is not, I don't feel that's an appropriate statement.
I'm just saying.
We do have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Five one. Okay, moving on. We have continued the hearing for the text amendment.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Welcome back, Mr. Preck. So I believe we are up to the application of analathrop for gourmet galley for a special permit for outdoor dining at 185 Main Street, Niantic. Is there any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'm moved to approve the application of analathrop for a special permit for outdoor dining at 185 Main Street, Niantic.
I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passed, six zero zero. And we continue the hearing for Todd Donovan. So we remain to old business and sub-cabines, Mr. Mahalan.
I'm still working, and I give it the pace of activity with the commission, a little time to be working on that, but we've still got it on the desk, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I have something for old business. The application for Devs, it had the second previous zoning commissioner on his name at the bottom, did you rectify that housekeeping issue?
Yes, staff is starting to catch up with.
Thank you, sir.
Being a new staff, she's catching on with it, that was changed and corrected.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if I may, also on that same application, it was approved with conditions, is there a reason why that was not indicated in the legal ad?
It should have said with conditions, I will check.
It did not?
Okay, we'll have the staff fix that, thank you.
Right here, if you want it.
New business, any new business on the floor, besides what we just had? It's, it's like, zoning official, Mr. Mahalan?
We're busy, you're gonna be busy, so we can, we continue, you're aware that we have affordable housing coming up in a, in a few weeks, so we've got a lot of activity.
Okay, thank you. Our ex officio for tonight, Ms. Chakela.
Ann Chakela, ex officio, I'm gonna keep this really brief. Okay, so, we had a board of selectmen meeting last night, and, April 19th, and the first electman stated that he had approached the town council and said that all recording and videos needed to be played on channel 22. That was one thing. The only other issue I wanted to bring up is the Dominion Building. The town is going to negotiations with Millstone and trying to get permission to do a level one testing of the property. Do there any questions?
Thank you.
Can I explain anything?
Okay, coming up, we have a May 9th planning meeting, will Ms. Harris, do Harris be able to attend that?
If I could be recognized?
Yes.
C and I switch.
Oh, okay.
During May 9th, and I keep you during the session. Thank you, Denise.
Oh, thank you, okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, will you adjourn the meeting?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?